Good.
You doing good?
Hey, how you doing, Carl?
Good.
Rise and join me in the salute to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public protestant and one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next order of business, the roll call.
Note for the record that all council members are present.
Adoption of the agenda. Any deletions, additions, changes?
Move adoption as is.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you. Next is oral communications. And I have one slip from Michelle Salmon, and she'd like to talk on oral communications, a consent calendar, item D, as in David. Michelle, please.
Well, that was pretty hasty, because I really want you to not include item D on the consent calendar. I feel that it needs further discussion. I've read through the document, and I feel that, basically, it's a document abdicating the all responsibility by Brookfield for the development that has taken place and is about to take place. And it leaves a great burden on the city of Brisbane for the responsibility of proper drainage. And we've seen the type of construction that's happened up there in the past, and how, shall I say, substandard it is. And yet this document leaves us holding the bag for what cut-and-fill, basically landfill development. And I don't feel that it's been properly examined. And this is, at this point, it's not about butterflies, it's about people. You're about to build houses that people are going to live in, and the city's going to be responsible for maintaining the drainage, or the homeowners' association, and we've seen how effective that is. And Brookfield wants to peddle its way right out of town, and who's going to be left holding the bag? Us, the new developer? I think that this really requires a lot more study than what I've seen here. Just as an example, in one of the amendments, it says that if the city agrees to do the maintenance, it shall not exceed $5,675 based upon $2,011. I'd sure like to know what kind of drainage maintenance the city could do for that small amount of money, especially if we had a catastrophic landfill, or the kind of landslide, or the kind of rainy season that we've experienced in the past. All of you have seen the great deal of trouble that happened up at the school with a similar type of construction where they do cut the slope, fill it, you know, and cut-and-fill. And it's basically landfill, and now we are going to be responsible, the city of Brisbane is going to be responsible, in conjunction with the homeowners' association, for maintaining that going forward. And I think that that's very irresponsible of the city to accept this kind of agreement. And as much as I'd like the $4 million for the habitat restoration as promised, I think that there are a lot of loopholes in this that leave us extremely vulnerable moving forward. I know many of you just want it off your plate, you want to be done with it, you don't want to look at this again, and you just want it to go away. And you're hoping you won't have to deal with it in our lifetime. But the fact of the matter is, we are responsible, the city of Brisbane will be responsible for this development. And this agreement, basically, lets Brookfield off the hook for everything and leaves us holding the bag. And I think you really need to seriously reconsider this, and not just rubber stamp it in the interest of accommodating their sale of the development rights to yet another developer. And I feel very strongly about that. You have a responsibility, and I really think we need to live up to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
You have a comment? I intend to pull that on the agenda. I intend to pull that on the consent calendar.
Okay.
Yeah, she's requested. She put a slip in.
We had a motion to approve the consent calendar, but we didn't.
No, 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 no.
No, we haven't.
No, we're at presentations now, unless there's oral communication.
Oh, okay, all right. So we're going to pull it from, we're going to pull it off the agenda. Would you like to speak some more on that?
Yes, when it comes up.
When it comes up, sure. Are there any other oral communications, the chance of people who address the council matters not on the agenda? My throat's going. Presentations, proclamation declaring October 2011 as fire prevention month. That's something I know a little bit. Did you want to say something first, Chief, before I read you the?
No, I just would like to take a minute, Mayor and council members, to thank you again for supporting the Fire Department in our efforts to try to keep the community as safe as possible, and this is the month that we do that. We will be going out to schools and doing presentations, and there's, you know, different events going on through different communities. So I just wanted to thank you again for your support.
Thank you. The proclamation says, "A proclamation of the city of Brisbane declaring October 2011 as fire prevention month. Whereas the city of Brisbane and North County Fire Authority is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our city, and whereas fires are serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. And whereas roughly 3,000 people die as a result of home fires and burns, more than 200,000 individuals are seen in the nation's emergency rooms for burn injuries. And whereas thermal burns outnumber skulls nearly two to one, but for children ages five and under skulls outnumber burns roughly two to one. Whereas cooking is the leading cause of home fires and home fire injuries, while heating equipment and smoking are the leading causes of home fire deaths. And the city of Brisbane and North County Fire Authority responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. Whereas the city of Brisbane residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. Whereas the residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas the 2011 Fire Prevention Month theme, 'Protect Your Family From Fire,' effectively serves to remind us all of the simple actions we can take to stay safer from fire during Fire Prevention Week and the year round. Now therefore I, Seibaldoff, Mayor of the city of Brisbane, do hereby proclaim October 2011 as Fire Prevention Month, and encourage all city of Brisbane residents to heed the important safety messages of Fire Prevention Month 2011, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of fire and emergency services."
Yeah, one of the ways that you and the community can protect yourself and your family from fire is, we always tell, you know, the community that during daylight savings time is a good time to change your batteries on your smoke detectors. And smoke detectors are a good way to let your family know that if there's, you know, a fire, an incipient fire growing in your house. So that's what we usually goes by, the change in the time, so.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Her first rain came early today, I guess that'll help.
I don't know if you have any other questions, too, but yeah, that helps the fire season out as far as grass fires, definitely.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, the next presentation, or the secret presentation, on National Preparedness Month. Who's going to do that one?
I'll take a shot at that, sir.
Oh, okay.
You'll let the projector get back on for the audience.
You got me now, that's too technical for me.
Yes, sir, I'm a civil engineer and not an electrical engineer. We'll have the city clerk do that. I'll just have fat fingers. So, Honorable Mayor, Member of the Town, Council Members, good evening. In years past, we have come forward and asked you for a proclamation, but what we thought we would do this year is sort of quickly go through a PowerPoint presentation to give us all a little more feel of what type of things can be done individually to be better prepared. And I also want to point out that this entire presentation is available on the city's website, it's under the OES webpage. So if anybody wants to see it, it's right there. The Ready Campaign is a federal campaign that was started back in 2003, and its goal is to inform the public and increase the level of basic preparedness across the nation. And as we know, emergencies can and do happen, and they can range from being inconvenient to devastating, but we think that if you take simple preparedness steps for yourself, you can minimize your impact, you make a big difference on the safety and the readiness of both yourself and your family. Emergency preparedness is a personal responsibility, and individuals are encouraged to take three preparedness steps. The first thing we recommend everyone do is get an emergency supply kit. Secondly, we suggest they make a family emergency plan. And lastly, to be informed about the types of emergencies that can happen in this area and the appropriate responses. First thing, as we mentioned, is the emergency supply kit. You can take some simple steps to prepare yourself and your family. The first step is to get this emergency supply kit. We urge all Americans to have some supplies on hand so they and their family can survive for three days if an emergency occurs. Here are some of the things that you should have in your emergency supply kit. They can typically be put together quite easily by individual purchases, although you can also find that there are many stores out there that sell them. Costco has them, the American Red Cross has them, and you can simply buy these prepackaged kits and put together some of the additional items. I know that's what we had done a number of years ago, we had the American Red Cross ones that were out for sale, and now that Costco has them, we don't carry the American Red Cross available on sale for here, but we certainly encourage you to have one. You obviously have to consider your family's own unique needs as you're preparing this kit. Certainly people that have older Americans or individuals with disabilities, or that have specific medications that they would need for a long time, for a longer time, rather, are very important. If you've got someone who has medication that they can't survive without, obviously you want to do the best you can to make sure that they have that medication available to them. Certain medications have to be chilled, so you have to think about how you're going to chill that. You know, if you have a freezer or something, you can keep it in. Obviously, if you've got babies and infants, these are things you also need to take under consideration. Pets, also a big consideration. If you have a pet, you've got to have emergency supplies for your pet. You've got to have food for your dog, you've got to have water for your dog, you've got to have a way to carry it. I think one of the most interesting remarks I've ever heard on this was in the debrief we had done from the 2008 fire on the mountain when we were out at the Sierra Point Yacht Club. And Jamie Dunn, and Jamie was here last time when we were going to do this, but she remarked on how she grabbed her cats up and stuffed them into a pillowcase. And, you know, you don't think about that, but in an emergency, you've got heavy smoke, you've got sirens and alarms, and police and fire trucks going by with loudspeakers, your animals are going to be disturbed. And so these are some of the things you have to think about in advance, is how am I going to take care of my animals? How am I going to corral my animals and get them into a vehicle with me? The second item we've talked about is making a family emergency plan. Typically, what we think is going to happen is emergencies are going to occur at the most inconvenient time. They're going to occur when you're at work, your kids are at school, your elderly parents that you take care of are someone else. And so one of the things that this emergency plan will help you do is figure out, how are you all going to rendezvous? Who are you going to call? Who are you going to talk to? How are you going to get back together so that you don't add to the stress of this emergency by wondering where everyone else is and wondering if they're okay? We encourage you to go to the www.redy.gov website. They actually have a really good template there that you can print out from the webpage and put this information together and talk about how you're going to get back together. It also has smaller cutout cards that you can keep in your wallet or your purse so you can have that information with you. Some of the things that we think you ought to have in your family emergency plan, obviously, an out-of-town contact, typically if you're in the middle of a disaster area, whether it's a hurricane down in Louisiana, or whether it's an earthquake here, your typical phone systems are not going to work, or they're going to be inundated by people making emergency calls on them. So oftentimes, you can make a call out of the area and have that call be answered easier than you can making a call across the street. So we recommend that members who are separated during an emergency call someone out of town, and that's the best way for you to find out that everyone is indeed okay. School and work plans, obviously, for those of us that have children at school, important to know, what is the school going to do if there is an earthquake? Where are your kids going to be? How are you going to be able to retrieve your kids? And then, of course, meeting places, again. Where would your rendezvous places be if you weren't at school? If you were just out, if it was a Saturday and your kids are out running amok like kids are supposed to do, running around, playing, and being young boys and girls, where are they supposed to come back to? And if I can get this thing to slide, there we go. Stay or go. This is one of the important decisions that we think we have here, particularly because of our proximity to the Wildland Interface. It's going to be one of the most important decisions that you have to make. What we encourage everyone to do is to listen to instructions from the emergency responders. Typically, that's going to be the police and the fire. They'll be driving around with their loudspeakers on. In the case of the 2008 event, we actually had, I think it was 50 police officers we had from outside of area that were staged down at the city hall, and when they were needed to go out and go door-to-door, they did. They were able to tell people whether they were to evacuate or not, but listen to the instructions from the local emergency management officials. Those will be the people that will be able to give you the best information. When you evacuate, obviously, you have to figure out where you're going to go. We will tell you where to go. In many cases, we recommend that people who don't have a pre-planned area go down to our residential assembly point, which is out at the Sierra Point Yacht Club. We recognize, though, that many people are going to have their own plans. Some people will go to a nearby family out of area, if it's something like a fire on the mountain. Even if it's a localized earthquake, people will drive out of the area. Some people will try to go to hotels. If you do go, obviously, take your pets with you, lock your door, take your emergency supply kit, and that will make life much simpler for you. Here's the last step about being informed. We want to point out that many of the steps that you take to prepare for different emergencies are the same. There are some important differences that impact the decisions you make and the actions you take. So, again, you can go to the website at ready.gov, which will give you information. You can also go to our website, Brisbane CA, the Emergency Services Department, we've got a bunch of helpful links on there. We think the website is a lot more friendly now that we've recently redone that in the last year or so, so go on there and peruse through. And lastly, you can get involved, there are Citizens Corps in Brisbane, we have the community emergency volunteers. Again, you can go to our website and find information there. We've sort of changed our protocol for the emergency volunteers in town lately. We don't ask for nearly as severe a commitment as we used to have them. We used to ask them to come to four quarterly meetings. We used to ask them to come to one annual event a year. The way things are right now, if we can just get people who want to come down and come to the eight module classes we teach, we're more than happy to do that. The only request we have is that we have more students than we have instructors, because our feeling is that if we train people, every person that we trained is one less emergency that we have to respond to during the case of a disaster. So if people want to come down and get trained, all they have to do is call us, there's contact information in there about what they need to do to get us, and we will schedule those classes, we're happy to do that for them. And, again, if you want more information, you can visit any of these websites, you can contact myself, or you can contact Shelley Romrell, who's the office specialist for OES. And as I mentioned earlier, the entire presentation's on the city website under the Office of Emergency Services Department. Be happy to take questions if there are any, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Any questions?
No question, but first I wanted to thank you for this presentation. It's really helpful. I noticed that the website that you had indicated, it's not hyperlinked, so that means they have to get out of that presentation and go to the WWUs individually. So if it's hyperlinked, they can just go right from the presentation.
Okay, sure, ma'am.
And then, aren't there other links that people can use, like going to the county office of emergency, or the state, or ABAG? There are a lot of?
There are a lot of links, ma'am. On our website, we do have, under Emergency Services, we have a helpful links page right there that I think most people will find adequate and robust enough to keep them up for a couple nights of reading.
Thank you for all your work on this.
You're welcome, ma'am.
Yeah, thanks, Randy.
Good job, sir.
Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you very much. That was very informative.
Now, that's an important thing, is, I think, is for families to take responsibility on being prepared, because you never know what's going to happen. And, of course, you know, in any emergency situation, it's always going to be mess, chaos, and if you take a little bit of focus, you know, it helps a lot, I think, you know, goes a long way. Be surprised how much people remember in a chaotic situation just through a little bit of training, so.
That's right.
Okay, next order of business is Samontae County Library Annual Report. Karen Choi, Acting Branch Manager for the Brisbane Library.
Hello.
Karen, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and council members, for having me here today. I'm just reporting on the 2010-2011 annual report. We've had a lot of great experiences at all of our branches throughout the county this year, and in particular, Brisbane's done a lot of great work. We've added new services to the library, including laptop checkouts. Patrons can use a laptop in the library, so that's increased our ability to offer patrons computer access.
Is that for free?
It's for free, yes. Everything's for free. We also have a program called Lawyers in the Library, where patrons can speak with a professional lawyer on different topics, and that's completely free as well. We have a digital storytelling project that just wrapped up, and that, essentially, we videotape Brisbane residents, and they talk about their experiences here in the community and all of their memories. So that's a nice time capsule piece there. We're starting a homebound delivery service pretty soon. This will help patrons who aren't able to make it out to the library. We'll be delivering books and materials to them. We get a large after-school crowd at the Brisbane Library, so we've done some positive incentives to promote good behavior at the library as well. So that's another project we have called Caught You Being Good. We've had a lot of great circulation here at the library. At Brisbane Library alone, over 85,000 items were checked out. This includes books, DVDs, music CDs, magazines, et cetera. And we also have a large ebook collection available, too, as well. And this has been launched throughout the county. So far, over 45,000 items have been loaned, so citizens can take advantage of that. We just added Kindle as one of the readers that will work with the ebook downloads, as well as iPads and iPhones and Nooks. So we wanted to also thank the Friends of the Library for being great advocates for us, also the Lions Club for providing financial assistance and working on programs with us, and, of course, the city of Brisbane for generously supporting patrons' ability to check out items, waiving that 75 cent hold fee that we normally charge. So, thank you very much for all of your support.
Thank you. Great presentation. Are there any questions?
I do, I'd like to ask, when people go to the library to use the computer, it's just for one hour?
You may have it up to two hours per day. The way it works now is you log in for an hour, and then the system automatically boots you out, but you can log on again for another hour.
So for the people who check out PCs or like that, how many hours that for? How many days? Is it like a book, that you take it for two weeks, three weeks at a time?
Oh, the ebooks?
No, the computer.
Oh, the computer? You can use it for two hours per day only?
Two hours per?
Yeah.
Then the other thing is, you mentioned about the homebound deliveries. That is a fantastic
Yes.
...service, truly. And I don't know how, what do you use to make sure that senior centers know about this opportunity and they're informed?
Yes, we're working on our marketing campaign to get more users of the service. Currently, we have quite a few interested volunteers to do the deliveries, but we are work, we need to work more on finding users for the service. We got our first sign-up. It's a new program, and we got our first sign-up recently, so we will be going out to senior centers and visiting with people.
The other thing I wanted to know, you were talking about attorneys, is that at all the different libraries, or it's just in particular, at particular libraries?
We have lawyers rotating throughout the county library, county and city libraries. Usually, it's a different lawyer. It depends on their specialty and what the community needs. Usually, the lawyer specializes in a certain topic, but they'll be able to answer general questions as well. And so people just sign up ahead of time to have a short amount of time to speak with them.
Have you had that in Brisbane?
Yes.
You pay up, great.
Yes. People are very excited about it.
I like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I do, Mr. Moore. I have just one question. Thank you for the presentation, by the way. You mentioned that over 85,000 items have been checked out from the library, and then almost 46,000 online.
Yes.
So how do those numbers compare to last year or in the previous year?
I believe that it's gone up. I am temporarily filling in for Corinne, who's the normal manager, but I believe that there has been a jump in circulation. I can get back to you on the exact figure if you'd like.
All right, so the online accessibility to books hasn't diminished the need for people to check things out?
No, it's actually, it's an exciting new thing, but we still get a lot of users checking out print materials. They're also particularly interested in our other materials, such as DVDs, especially with the town video store just having closed, and
Sure.
Even music, even, it's so easy to get music online, people still are checking out CDs from the library. So there's still a big value for having our nice library here.
Definitely.
Yeah.
All right, well, thank you.
I love libraries so much. One night, I got stuck at the St. Carlos Library, and they closed, and I was locked in. If the custodian wouldn't come, I would have been there until Saturday morning, which is a nice place to be stuck.
Stayed overnight?
No, they came and saved me. But I love it. That's a great place to be stuck. Thank you for everything.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. A great presentation.
Thank you.
And thank you for the material, too. Okay, now we come to the consent calendar, and I understand you wanted to pull an item set?
Remove item D, and then I'll move approval of items A through C, the exception of D, and E through G.
I'll second the motion. Okay, let's see, we're approving items A, B, C, we're going to pull D, right?
Right.
Okay, and then E, F
And G.
And G are approved. I mean, that's
That's what the motion is, yeah.
Okay, and you have, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Some moved.
No.
Oh, he did it already.
I second it already. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Except for item A, on which I'm going to have to abstain.
Oh, yes.
Item D.
Okay, item D. I'd like for staff to, I do have a couple of questions, but I'd like for them to respond to some of Michelle's concerns about regards to cut-and-fill and the homeowners' association taking over.
Well, I don't know what document she's looking at, but there's nothing here that leaves the city on the hook for anything. There is language in the maintenance agreement, she quoted a particular figure, and that was the estimated cost of maintaining a facility known as the media filters. And I'll leave it up to the city engineer to explain in more detail what they are, but my understanding it's part of the storm drainage system. The amount of money that Michelle mentioned was a figure that was determined by the city, not by the developer. That is our estimate of the cost of maintaining only that one facility. We were maintaining it because we preferred to maintain it. facility. We were maintaining it because we preferred to maintain it, to make sure that it's done properly. But the agreement says, if you read it carefully, that if at any time the city elects not to maintain it, the city is no longer required to maintain it and it would be maintained by the homeowners association. As far as all of the other obligations on the maintenance agreement, the both maintenance agreements in fact, these are simply continuations of the same arrangements that were put in place for Unit 1. And by and large, what it does is it establishes various maintenance obligations, initially to be done by the developer until the project is completed and then assumed by the homeowners association. The city at all times has the ability to, you know, make sure that that work is done, to require the association to do it properly, or the developer. The initial developer, Brookfield, is, is not, you know, running out of town and leaving, you know, dropping the ball and leaving the city holding the bag. The property is being sold to another company, Toll Brothers, which happens to be one of the largest home builders in the entire country. They will be putting up the bonds and other security required under our, as a condition of recording the final map. So, all of the conditions that are being imposed here are, to a large extent, a continuation of Unit 1, some relate only to Unit 2. The approval of the final map, I would mention again, is simply a ministerial act. This is not the time or the place to revisit the merits of that development. We've already done that a while ago, and what is before the council tonight is simply a determination that all of the things that are required to be provided for the city to grant final map approval, namely that the final map is consistent with the tentative map, have been satisfied. And staff has made that determination, that those conditions to be performed at this stage have been performed. The maintenance agreements as well are, as I said, continuation of the same arrangements, by and large, the same type of obligations that are already in place on Unit 1, and that are being performed by the homeowners association. I'll defer to Randy as far as, if he wants to explain what a media filter is, but again, that, that's an arrangement that was done at our request, and it's a cost estimate that is, has been determined by the city, not by the developer, and it's a number that we feel is, is more than adequate to cover our cost. If it doesn't, simple answer is, we either have the homeowners association pay the extra cost, or they can do it themselves. We're not required to continue doing this work under this agreement. Randy?
Sure, so, there are three media filters that were installed to process the storm water that comes off of the site, and they're in large vaults. Two of them are in the public right of way, one of them is in a public service easement. There's controversy back and forth about who ought to maintain those. Because we think it's so important, and because it impacts the downstream water quality, we thought that we should have the responsibility to maintain those, but because it's being installed as a condition of the development, it's a condition of the NIPPs and SWIP requirement of the development, we thought that they should pay for it. So, the developer has agreed to pay for it, and we do have in hand a binding quote from a company to perform the maintenance at the rates that we've specified herein, so we feel quite comfortable that we're going to get the work done at, at those prices.
Okay. From the logistical standpoint, since the land is now going to be, or the project's going to be sold, I guess, with the land, from Brookfield to Toll Brothers, so that's going to happen after the final map is approved, but not recorded?
Correct.
Okay, so, once the final map is approved, then the sale's going to go through, and then, once the final map is recorded, then what's the, I wasn't quite clear on the issuance of like, building permits and, because, once the building permits are issued, then the developer, which will now be Toll Brothers, will release the funds for the endowment for each lot.
It's the same arrangement as if there was no sale. They're simply stepping into the shoes of Brookfield. I don't know what their internal arrangements are as far as who is paying the endowment or the additional monies. For all I know, it could be Brookfield is paying those. All we know from our end, or all we're concerned about, is that when there is an application for a building permit, then the permit is not issued until we receive the cash amount on the per-lot basis for the additional HCP contribution for the endowment and the cash contribution for the Public Facilities Fund that goes directly to the city.
Right.
So, and then we'll collect that money for the HCP and remit it periodically to the county. And I do need to put together a little agreement between us and the county for that, but basically, it's exactly the same arrangement that we've had all along. I, I couldn't tell you, you know, whether Brookfield is putting up that money or whether Toll Brothers is, from our perspective, it really doesn't matter. We're going to be looking for cash for the amount that has already been established under the earlier subdivision improvement agreements. When we receive the cash, they get the building permit, and not, and not before. The only reason the bonds are coming a little bit later was kind of a chicken and egg situation, and that is, the bond can only be issued to the contractor. Toll is not yet the contractor, so, you know, it was a matter of simply timing. But my understanding actually is that the bond amounts have now been pretty well determined, and we might even have draft forms of the bonds, so they're just about posted already, and the city engineer has already worked out the various amounts that are going to be required for the different bonds that are specified in the agreement.
Okay. That kind of, that kind of answers that question.
And one other thing, the grading is going to be, you're going to have to comply with our grading ordinance. There, there's no change being made to the requirements that, that we will be imposing with regard to the grading. And those are, again, you know, conditions of approval that have been in place. So, we're really not changing any of the conditions of approval. Those conditions were reviewed in detail by the council at the time of the tentative map approval, and then when the project was modified. So, none of those approvals are being changed. All we're doing here is granting the final map approval as a ministerial act, which means that there's no, no revisiting of those issues, there's no discretion involved, and the two maintenance agreements are kind of related to that, to carry forward the maintenance responsibilities that are set forth in the conditions of approval.
Right. And, and I see that one of those has to do with the, the bonds for the lagoon, is it Randy? The, the channel?
Yes, sir, it's the channel.
Yeah, and, but we don't have an idea what that's going to be, and what, you know what the improvements are, what, what that's going to actually do?
It was determined that the improvements weren't necessary, after we had gone through and looked at it, so the developer and the city manager's office came to an agreement as to how those funds are going to be transferred to the city rather than via a capital improvement project.
Okay, and that's, it's still going to have, it's still going to be under a bond, though? Is that, is that correct?
No, that'll be picked up. The change being made here is we're getting cash.
Okay.
So, basically, the, the end result is the developer will not be performing the work, but we'll simply get the cash.
Okay.
And then it can be used for, again, paid to the city on a per-lot basis. There'll actually be three components with every, with every building permit, the HCP fund, the capital improvement fund, and then this, this amount of money as well, which again, goes to the city, as I believe.
And as it is right now, there's seventy-one unimproved lots right now that
Yes.
building permits would be issued to on the final map. And now, when they do that, logistics of that is going to be like neighborhoods at a time, or singular, or how does that work?
I'm sorry.
No, the, the building permits.
Oh, I would have to see what their schedule is. Usually, it's done in groups. They have submitted a schedule, maybe Randy knows what the sequencing is, but it's, it's unlikely to be one at a time. You'll probably have, you know, whole streets at a time.
Neighborhoods at a time, yeah, okay.
There is, there is a schedule.
The, the only schedule that really falls under my purview is that they are, they want to do the first five or six lots first, and then they want to come in and do the remainder later. They're going to try and finish up there at the back of the first street that they're already on.
Lily Court.
Put in their models, yes, sir. They want to put their, their models and such in there.
That's all the questions I have.
Sophie?
I'm good. I have, if I may, Mr. Mayor. So, 1.8 million is, is the contribution the city will receive for the public facility or facilities?
Yes.
We've already received some money because there's been some units that were built. How much is left of the 1.8 million?
Seventy-one.
Yeah, I mean, the, as I recall, the, the Public Facilities Fund was to receive two contributions, one on a per-unit basis, and then one was kind of the leftover or the remainder of the drainage project that didn't have to be done. And the total of those would be in the neighborhood of $3 million.
Okay. And so far, the city's received how much?
Seventeen lots.
Just seventeen, okay. So, by the time the remaining seventy-one units are built, the city will receive an additional, how much?
Well, we should, at that time, when the project is completely built out, we should have approximately $3 million for the Public Facilities Fund.
Okay, all right.
That built or after the permits are issued?
After the building permits are issued, yeah. And then, in regards to the, the media filters, Randy, so, we have this estimate that, that's, that's to do the work today. What's the anticipated cost, you know, ten years from now, fifteen, twenty?
We use the Consumer Price Index in it for the San Jose, Oakland, San Francisco area, CPIW, it's the Urban Wage Earners, so that's what we use as an escalator. It's typically what we use in the majority of our contracts.
Okay, good, all right, thanks.
I guess, the word estimate is incorrect. We have a contract to perform the work, that amount of money.
Oh, okay.
So it's not just a guess, this is an actual contract?
Okay. Those are all the questions for me.
Okay, Michelle, I'm sorry I called you on the consent calendar. Is there something you'd like to add now?
Michelle Sam, Brisbane resident. I'm sorry I focused on just that one part. I feel that there's a lot of problems with this whole thing. For one thing, the whole section about City of Brisbane Northeast Ridge Private Slope Drainage and Maintenance Plan Prepared by Genghis Falk, June 1990, corrected in 1993. That was like twenty-one years ago, and, and I am, and yet, it's part of this document as being specific of how we're going to do, you know, place geotextile fabric on prepared grade and fasten to grid system. Haven't we improved this at all in the last twenty years? I mean, this is like archaic compared to, you know, building what we should be looking at, and this is one of my concerns with this entire process. And it's, and, and the words that I've heard, there's controversy over who should maintain an important drainage system. I've heard words like basically the same, by and large the same, substantially the same, but what are the differences? And those are some of the things that concern me, because we've been stuck before. When Southwest Diversified sold the project to Brookfield, they left a lot of things, unpromised things undone and unspecified and unwritten. And, and I see the same thing happening all over again. And I, I just feel like that, that we're ready to sign off on this, and so we can get some money for a drainage project that we felt needed to be done, but now doesn't need to be done. And I feel a little bit like, yeah, the chicken and the egg, but, come on, this stuff from Genghis Khan isn't even signed on every, it's not even signed, there's no dates on it. This is all, you know, earthen berms and swells, area drains. I just feel like we're pushing this through without reexamining what we're really doing here. And when you go back and you look at unit, the properties that have already been built in that valley by Lily Court and Golden Aster and everything, do you remember the pictures that I showed you of like, the very poor drainage in backyards? And we're going to rely on the homeowners association when it took us two years to get the homeowners association to remove an illegal fence? There's, there's no teeth in this that protects the City of Brisbane and, and enables us to actually enforce these rules and regulations. I mean, when you read the, the CCNRs, they're not even supposed to rearrange the dirt in their backyard because the drainage there is so fragile. It's so at risk. And yet, we're about to do more of the same, seventy-one more of the same, on this same radical type of cut up the mountain and fill it and then make nice, easy pads to build on, and then walk away. And I don't think that that's what we need to do here. Yes, you're, they're going to build seventy-one homes. Yes, we've agreed that they're going to build seventy-one more homes. But do they have to do it using 1990 standards instead of 2011 standards or 2012 standards? I mean, we're requiring all these big high-rises and the Balans to, to build, you know, according to modern codes and modern techniques and energy efficiency and, and using the best technology we have now, and yet, we're willing to put people at risk by building seventy-one more homes on, you know, antiquated cut and fill landfill processes? I'm not a geotechnical engineer, for sure I'm not, you know, but I have eyes in my head and I've seen the drainage problems that we've had in those type of areas. This is, you guys have seen it. You've seen the pictures that I've brought with all the water in the backyards and not draining properly. And when the city engineer says there's a controversy over who should maintain these very important drains, that kind of raises a red flag for me, that this is a problem area. You look at the erosion up there from the stuff they've already developed, it gives me chills. You lay on the floor of the Mission Blue Center and you hear the whole building go periodically, where it's settling because it's built on cut and fill, and yet, we're just going to rubber stamp it and let them be on their way. And I just think that's irresponsible, I really do. And yes, of course, I'm personally bitter about what happened with the Northeast Ridge. I feel that we didn't do the right thing, but we still need to hold their feet to the fire and make sure that, that they're going to do this, they're going to do it right. And every one of you will be responsible if we don't. And I guess that's how I feel. I know, I know they're in a big hurry to get this done, and I'm tired of it, too, but that doesn't mean we should do a slipshod job of it, it really doesn't. And the responsibility is on all of you, you five, to make sure that it gets done correctly, and to just rubber stamp this without going through and really looking at the engineering behind it and saying, is there a better way we could do this? Maybe we could do it more on the contour of the hill, so that we don't have to totally cut everything away and then refill it to build housing pads? I mean, these were some of the things we talked about. And in February of 2010, when this was agreed, that we were going to go ahead and proceed with this travesty, I thought there would be opportunities for the public to have input about what we were going to do in terms of the design and the construction and the way that we go about cutting up the mountain and destroying it. But apparently not. And, and to find this just on the consent calendar, you know, and I'm, I'm sure the staff has done their hard work and everything, but there's been a lot of changes that have been made, even though it's basically the same and by and large the same and substantially the same, there's still changes. And there's changes that do need to be made. And, and I think that we should have a, a really, a new look at the way that they're going to do the construction there, and based on today's techniques and the stuff we know now, after, you know, several houses have slid away, and we've had major landslides in Brisbane and all over the peninsula, before we go and do this again. And, and that's how I feel. And, and I feel like you guys are caught in this little trap of like, well, we got to do this because the chicken and the egg and they, you know, but don't be hasty about this. We're going to live with this for a really long time. So, maybe we should really step back and take a good long look at approving, you know, a private slope and drainage plan that's over twenty years old, before we implement this. I mean, that's just an example, you know, and yes, you know, I trust Randy to say, oh, it's going to cost 5,300 and some dollars to change the filters, you know, based in 2011 dollars. He knows what he's doing, you know. But overall, I think this sucks. I think, I think it's not a good idea to just move forward without reexamining the engineering involved in this. And I said that in, in 2010, in February of 2010, it was one of the many arguments, but it got lost in all the butterfly stuff. But I said at that time, that this is a geotechnically challenging area, and we need to really look at what we're doing here before we make more mistakes. I mean, look at the massive mess up at the school, elementary school, and on all those piers they had to drive just to stabilize the hillside so the kids could, didn't have to walk in the street. What are we going to face with when there's seventy-one houses there that are sliding away? And that's our responsibility now. So, thank you, sorry.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, Michelle. Sir? Oh, did you want to say something?
Sure, sir, if you don't mind. Let me just kind of clarify a couple of things. I think I may have chosen a word poorly when I said with regards to the media filter that was controversy. I think what I was trying to relay is that there is discussion amongst cities as to how you would handle that project. It's not a controversy as in there's a big back and forth, positive and negative about it, there's just a conversation about who's most responsible for doing that. And in our case, in this analysis here, I err on the side of the city being the party responsible for it because I think when it comes down to it, I believe firmly that my staff is going to be more responsible and more willing to do the right thing because it's the right thing and that it's going to be the best for water quality. So I appreciate being allowed the opportunity to clarify that. With regards to a couple of other of Michelle's comments, I understand how someone can take a quick look at this and not appreciate all of the effort that's gone into this for the last six months, particularly with regards to the geotechnical engineering, the way it's been designed and redesigned by the applicant civil engineer, by his geotechnical engineer, the peer review that it's gone under. I think it's fair to say that over that same period, the last six months, one of the major items that we did was with the developer, we went through his conditions of approval that were originally issued. And I think Mr. Poulsen might say that we tortured him with forcing him to ensure that he was in full compliance with each and every one of those items. And if I were to go back in the office right now, his compliance with each and every one of those items fills three three-ring binders this thick to show that this condition requires you to do this. Did you comply? Yes. Demonstrate how, what paperwork demonstrates that, and we've gone through that. So the conditions that were placed upon this development have been satisfied. The geotechnical engineering for the cut-and-fill of this project are designed pursuant to modern, current technology means and professional practices. I'm not aware of any homes on the Northeast Ridge that have had any slide issues. I do understand that there's conversation about maintenance. My staff has gone through the slope maintenance agreement, everyone from myself, the project manager, my maintenance staff have gone through and looked at the slope maintenance agreement and have looked at those conditions. And we find that they are still adequate for today as far as the maintenance. I think there's a big distinction between maintenance procedures that were written perhaps 20 years ago and, excuse me, geotechnical engineering that was done within the last year. So I want to separate those two items for you so you understand that they are different.
Thank you, Randy.
If I could, please. Randy, you helped facilitate the slide up at Littman.
Yes, sir.
On securing the FEMA funds that were used to remediate that.
Yes, sir, I also managed the design and the construction, yes.
Yeah. And can you kind of talk a little bit about that, maybe what the difference is on cut-and-fill of that type of hill or is there, or what, compared to Northeast Ridge?
I'm not sure that I could do a very good job of that, sir, because I do not know how that hill was placed in the condition it's placed. From my review of it, it doesn't appear to have been a benched hill, it doesn't appear to have been an engineered hill. It looks, at its best, it perhaps was just trimmed. But typically, if you were going to put a hillside like that in, in fact, the original way that we tried to get FEMA to approve putting it in, rather than drilling those piers, a much more traditional method is to remove the slide, remove below the slide, and then to build it back in in benches, to put it back in intentionally, to engineer it so that it's got reverse slope and so that it actually has frictional cohesion so that its own weight holds it together. For whatever reasons, FEMA did not approve that, so that's why the type of beam construction that you see out there was used because by not allowing the geotechnical engineer to put any of it back in an engineered form, he had to assume that he had zero assistance from the hill in holding itself together. He had to assume that the hill was just floating and ready to come down. So those beams were all designed in that fashion.
Right, and those beams were drilled pretty far down, like a two-to-one ratio or something?
Twenty-five to 35 feet, yes, sir. And then they also have the soldier tiebacks that go through the beams that go another 30 feet into the hillside.
Right, and those were welded in and then the...
The soil nails that are drilled in, yes, sir.
Nails drilled in and they go back quite a ways, so.
Yes, sir.
Okay. In regards to the differential settlement of Mission Blue, have you experienced that in the building? I mean, you're in charge of the building up there, have you seen any indication of differential settlement?
I am responsible for the maintenance of the building, sir. I haven't had that brought to my attention. I believe, it wouldn't surprise me to hear that a building creaks, that wooden floors in such creek. I'm just, I'm not aware that there's anything in the walls that indicate that there's a major settlement.
Okay. All right.
Could I ask a question, sir?
Yeah.
Please.
Thanks. Our city engineer, you live here and I know you're more than city engineer, you live here, you appreciate the town and so forth. What was the problem with some of the homes in Northeast Ridge that they've had problem with the paint or the quality of work? What was going on that there's an assessment?
All right, I'm trying to be very careful as I answer that, ma'am, because part of it is my, yeah, part of that is not what's going on up here at Landmark. I can't speak to any of their issues or at Landmark. I am a resident of the Viewpoint Association. At the Viewpoint Association, there were some issues about flashing on the building not being properly installed so that water intruded into the wooden structures where it was not supposed to, and that caused some severe wood rot. There was undoubtedly some material selection made for the metal handrails that didn't consider very well the type of ecosystem we have out here, this very, this very small micro-weather system we have. We also experienced that when we were building the Northeast Ridge Water Tank, the 1 million-gallon tank that the developer was required to put in. I believe the developer painted that three, if not four, times because we're just finding that the environment out here is wet and dry so quickly, it cycles so quickly that it's really not, it's really rough on steel, it's really rough on trying to find conditions when you can paint and you can get the paint to dry and to cure. So I think all of those things combined. But I'm not aware of any issues that were settlement-type related issues. I think generally, the modern geotechnical engineering that goes into cut and filling these slopes and with all of these buildings being on concrete piers, I think they're the safest buildings in town as a result of their modern engineering.
So I understand that Toll is one of the major builders in the state, so I hope they would understand the climate, the conditions that our city has, and they would be prepared to make sure what people have gone through, I have friends that have gone through. At the same time, I've seen that Brookfield was very helpful in trying to address some of this. So I hope that Toll would know that this is a serious matter, the weather condition. Hopefully, they would be prepared to make sure things like that doesn't happen.
I would think that any developer, ma'am, would do that. They all have an express warranty when they create construction, and no developer wants to come back and do work twice, no developer wants to be the subject of a lawsuit to go back and do retrofit. That work is always much more expensive than doing it properly the first time.
It's interesting, as a resident, I remember I was going for campaigning and I would take my flyer. None of the homes that I really faced in central Brisbane, but at the Northeast Ridge, I would go and pass this through the door, it would just fly right inside the house. You could tell that there's a gap between the door, it's now really tight. So in my opinion, it's really workmanship. So I'm very sensitive about that, that I hope that those wonderful homes are going to be truly a model of safety and energy efficiency, name it.
And so we, ma'am, and you bring up some of the same questions that are asked of me and of Mr. Swickie's department all the time. And part of it speaks to, you know, what does the city really have responsibility for? Well, of course, we have responsibility for enforcing building codes, of course, we have responsibility for enforcing health, life, and safety. But then there are some issues. Someone had told me that the cabinets above their washer and dryer only had two screws in them and they fell down. Well, is that, you get to a point where sometimes people become frustrated and they think, well, perhaps the city, the city should have inspected that. Well, no one wants to pay for a home where the city has to inspect every screw that goes in for every cabinet. You just, you couldn't afford it. You just really don't want to have to pay a building inspector to be there eight or 10 hours a day while the entire home is being built. So we inspect the health and safety, we inspect the building code, we inspect the electrical code, we inspect those items, we inspect the items that are required to be installed per the conditions of approval as far as efficiencies and such. And then where you draw those lines, it becomes difficult and blurry. And we do hope that the developers will be professional and the workmanship will be good, but I think we all recognize in life that, you know, every now and then, somebody gets a lemon for a car. And I think it happens with homes, too.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Good.
No, I am complete, thank you.
Okay. So what's your pleasure, counsel?
May I make a comment?
Oh, I'm sorry. Come on. Brother, please.
Thank you, Terry O'Connell, Brisbane resident. Quality matters, and it matters in Brisbane and it matters in the development that happens on the Northeast Ridge. Under the conditions of approval under the Fourth Amendment, item F, it mentions if the developer goes into the habitat, they'll pay $25,000 per acre, or the maximum. Is that correct? In my assumption, the bond for encroachment in the habitat is $25,000 per acre?
This is item F on page one.
That is the amount of the bond that needs to be posted to ensure that there is no damage to the habitat. It's not what the developer pays, it is a security for the protection of the habitat calculated at the rate of $25,000 per acre.
So I'm not sure how that would work out if a developer goes, if whoever develops it goes in and damages, encroaches on the habitat they shouldn't touch. Does that mean $25,000 is the most that they pay?
No, that's per acre.
Per damaged acre, possible damaged acre.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like any other security, that is a resource available, if the habitat is damaged, developer has the obligation to repair it. If the developer defaults in the performance of that obligation, and that would have to be restored to the satisfaction of the county as the manager of the habitat and to the city. If the developer defaults, then the city and the county would have recourse against the bonding company in the same way as if you had a bond as to guarantee the construction of a structure. And the developer defaults, the bonding company would come in and finish the construction or pay you the money so you could build it. So it's a penalty amount, but if the developer went in and restored and repaired the damage, then there would be no need to make a claim on the bonding company.
Thank you for the clarification. I don't, I see that this also under Resolution 2011-43, item three, grants the city the property to parcel G, which is the road, Guadalupe Canyon. But I don't see where it addresses parcel B, which is Calippe Hill, and the transference of that dependent on the parcel map. So I have a question on that. And then, because quality matters, there are construction defects at all the units up that have been built so far on the hill. And when you do go into the Mission Blue, you can tell that there has to be some settling because the ladies' room bathroom doors won't lock anymore. They've all had their locks moved from place to place to place because everything is, nothing's square anymore. So I think that we really do need to look at how the land is graded, and I'm hoping that when these lots come up for a grading permit as it goes street by street by street, that we can look at proper grading permits and grading practices so that we make sure that we do do the best possible job. And I would like reassurance that those grading permits are looked at prior to them being issued and that we're not just going to let them go through without looking at them at today's standards. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Anyone else? No? What's your pleasure, counsel?
Well, I'm certainly comfortable with going ahead. Michelle, I do understand, you know, your concerns, but I think with it being done on today's standards, I think it addresses that, you know? And so, of course, there's always a risk whenever you do stuff, but I think, you know, I'm willing to go forward with that. You know, I think the risk is very minimalized. The whole town is kind of built on the hill, so I'm ready to go forward with it.
I'll second Clark's motion to adopt Resolution 2011-43. Do you have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Guys, have it, motion carries. Okay, that's for item D, and I believe that completes our consent calendar. So we adapt to new business. Consider request from Jim Macurio, Vice President of the San Francisco 49ers Stadium Operations and Security for the use of landfill property in Brisbane for parking for the remainder of the games in the 2011 49er season. Sir?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Council members, good evening. Thank you very much for speaking to you today. Let me first say that I do apologize for the fact that we got to come back to you and talk to you and ask about the ability to use this in the past. My understanding is somebody other than myself or a representative of another agency came in before you and asked permission to use this. And so I apologize for having to come back to you. Thank you again, though, for the opportunity. What we're faced with is with the last few years that we have at Candlestick Park, the number of parking spaces in and around the city of San Francisco and certainly in some areas in Brisbane, parking for our games is, and always has been a premium, but we're losing a number of parking spaces due to development up on Jamestown Avenue and some other areas on Gilman and Fitch in San Francisco. Last season, we asked through City Park and other representatives of Universal Paragon to see what we can do to utilize property on the landfill by BD Avenue, and it turned out to be quite successful. What I didn't know is, and that's to no fault of your own, certainly to us, was that there was a process that needed to be taken place for us to move forward for the 2011 season and beyond to possibly move forward and utilize that space for parking for the duration of the time that the 49ers play at Candlestick Park. So that's why I'm here, one, again, to apologize for, I'll say, us for dropping the ball, and then again apologizing to ask you to consider approval of using that space on a temporary basis for the 2011 season and then giving us the opportunity to move forward, whether it's now or at the end of our season, to go through the normal protocols to utilize that space for parking. The game we had against the Dallas Cowboys was 60,000-plus attended game, and unfortunately, several hundred cars had to be sent home without any available places to park. Despite our great efforts of asking people to take public transit and carpool, unfortunately, those efforts were quite unsuccessful. It's certainly not successful enough to get people who want to come to our city and certainly pass through yours to attend our football games. The security issues and the safety and traffic issues associated with the traffic, not only on your city streets but San Francisco and certainly on Highway 101, was such that was quite uncomfortable for us, certainly for the city and county of San Francisco or the San Francisco Police Department, California Highway Patrol. I don't know if you're aware, we do hire members of your police department from the Brisbane, we have a good working relationship with Brisbane, to assist us in some of the traffic monitoring, and we would, again, do so if you allowed us to move forward, to allow us to park cars temporarily for the 2011 season. So I'm here kind of with hat in hand to see what it is we can do. We do have a game this Sunday, and with our... We do have a game this Sunday, and with our dramatic comeback of Sunday's 24-23 victory, we anticipate even more and more people coming, which is not a bad thing, but it is a catch-22 for us. So I'm here in front of you to ask if there is anything that you guys can do to allow us temporarily to park for the 2011 season, and if it's concurrently or congruently, to figure out a way to go through some of those processes to get it right this next go-around. So I'm here to ask any questions that you may have or any concerns that you might have.
Yeah, I have some questions, if I may.
Yes, sir.
So last year, I think it was a gentleman that's behind you, he came before us.
I'm not throwing any darts or anything.
Yeah, I think he was the guy. Now, when we allowed the cars to park in the Baylands...
Yes, sir.
Did you charge the people to park there?
Yes, there is a fee, and if I can remember correctly, it is a reduced fee to park as opposed to what you would park closer to the facility. Yes, there was a charge.
Okay, so there's a, okay. And does San Francisco receive money from the...
49ers do not.
No, the city of San Francisco, does it receive money from cars parking in the lots?
Not in, to the best of my knowledge, no. This is, the city of San Francisco would not be able to receive any money for cars parked outside of their city.
No, I'm talking in San Francisco. The parking lots that are located in San Francisco, they...
Indeed. There's a tax.
There's a tax.
Parking tax involved, yes.
Do you know how much that is?
It's 25%. I think it's the parking.
They got a 25% cut, all right. And then how many parking spots are you looking at?
Well, I think what we're estimating is the use of 300 to 500 spaces in Brisbane would probably satisfy the demand. I will tell you, we actually, we actually have to move our employees. We have moved our employees off-site to try to accommodate other fans, so we actually bus our employees. So that was one attempt to not to have to use this property, and even still with that move, it's not been enough.
Sure. And so the reduced rate, how much is the reduced rate?
I think they're charging $20, $25 in Brisbane, $30 in the city and county of San Francisco.
You get five bucks off.
Five-dollar, yeah.
All right. Okay. I don't have a calculator with me.
I do have. So that's an incentive for more people to park in Brisbane?
Sure, save that five bucks, but you know, people...
That's right.
Will park quite far to save the whole amount. But of course, you know, people will wait in line for the Bay Bridge to lower the $2 amount.
Ten oh two, yeah.
That's right. Yeah, so...
500 at $25?
Yeah.
It's $12,500.
$12,500.
Right. So city gets 25% of this? Where's the 25%? I'm following up on your...
I'm unaware of if the city of Brisbane has a parking tax.
I'm talking about San Francisco.
No, no, we don't, I don't...
So if...
No, I'm talking about San Francisco.
The city and county of San Francisco...
Yeah.
A parking tax would be levied on any parking. It would be 25% of what was collected. So in that particular case, it'd be, you know, $5 if that was parked in San Francisco.
So I have a question for staff. So I remember this, you know, last year, we couldn't apply any kind of tax because we needed to have a ballot measure, correct? And so...
Well, no, I think the issue was that they were going to come back for a conditional use permit, and a fee was probably going to be part of, just one of many things that were going to be discussed in that.
Okay.
And when that, so here we are again, kind of at the last minute, and I, you know, the city attorney may have to weigh in on this, but, you know, I mean, it seems like we're rewarding bad behavior.
Oh, yeah.
It's what's happening here.
Exactly.
In some ways, we're rewarding bad behavior, right?
Yes.
So if the council's inclined to move forward with this, maybe if the 49ers representative is willing to commit to a 25% fee to the city of Brisbane, I don't know, will we do this kind of on the record?
If it's a voluntary thing, because it's a general tax in San Francisco, if we were to adopt something similar to that, it wouldn't need a ballot measure. And not only that, it would need a ballot measure on an election date on which council members are being elected, which would defer it even more. We have collected various funds, not as a tax but as a voluntary, you know, fee, and I think the anticipation was this would be somehow built into the use permit process to at least create parity between Brisbane and San Francisco so that, you know, we're, if we're taking all the traffic and all the burden of the cars moving in and out of here, at least the city should get the same benefit as San Francisco does, and unfortunately, we never had the opportunity to get to that issue.
Yeah, so you're thinking of something like a donation to, like, the Park and Rec Department, something of that sort?
No, I wouldn't even allocate it just to general payment to the city. Again, it's consideration for, in this case, I guess we'd call it a license or something because we really don't have time for a use permit. It'd be more of a contractual thing than a zoning approval.
Right.
Well, I will say to you, I understand your point, and by no means are we looking to sidestep any of the, that approval process. It was simply a, an error of, and probably more so a miscommunication than anything. If, I will let you know, the 49ers do not collect any of the money. 49ers do not receive any of the money. However, it is that important to the 49ers that if we need to do some sort of a donation, it would be something that we would certainly take into consideration for the mere fact that we've got no other alternatives, to be quite honest with you, and I think it is certainly detrimental to our fan base and to our fans that are attending our games. I will tell you, we do incur some costs associated with paying Brisbane police to help you monitor the traffic and to pay for the costs associated with that so the city is not out-of-pocket any costs associated with monitoring the traffic that our games may or may not impact, you know, on your city. So we do take on that already, we already take on that obligation of paying the police officers to work that games specifically at Beatty and Alana, I guess, are the streets out there. So, but if that is a condition of approval, I would certainly take into consideration some sort of contribution. I don't know what I'm prepared to.
I think we've already stated that. How, the license, that could be issued fairly quickly?
There's really no license here.
Or whatever you're talking about. I mean, I know in the staff report, you talked about having to go to the Planning Commission, but the next meeting is October 27.
This is a minute action of the city council this evening to either allow for this use or not to allow for this use because we simply don't have time to do anything else. If you want to make it conditioned upon some sort of agreement between the city and whomever the responsible party on the other end is, that there be some sort of in, of a fee, then I think you could delegate that to me...
Yes.
To work that out over the next few days, and if that worked out satisfactory, then they could be ready to do that on the weekend. But the first question you got to answer is, is this on the use under these conditions that you're prepared to approve?
I'm prepared to approve the use.
I have some questions, sir.
Given a fee to be negotiated, a fee in the neighborhood of 25%.
Yes.
At least this go-around, it would have to be something that the city manager could put together.
Yes.
I'm going to be out of commission from tomorrow for the rest of the week, so...
Yeah, and also, you know, that 25% doesn't cover the police fee.
Yes.
That's a separate issue, or just, you know, whatever you're giving to our police department to manage that side because we also have a lot of street parking that, you know, where we have to have our police officer out there.
We wouldn't anticipate that.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
So I think you know where we stand.
Okay. This is for the city attorney. This is for the city attorney. When Eddie D decided to build his shopping center out there, we finally saw the plans and all of the parking was going to be in Brisbane. And that didn't sit very well with us, so we passed an ordinance prohibiting that kind of use on the Baylands. Now, here it is. What, do we want to keep this ordinance on the books? What, you know?
Well, at this point, we're not doing an ordinance. We're really not...
No, we had an, we have an ordinance.
We have an ordinance now, yeah, which is causing the problem.
But how do we get around that?
Yes.
If we're going to have this thing every time somebody comes to town...
Well, the way we get around it is the way we thought we were getting around it last year, and that is they would come in, they, I guess, would be UPC or through the 49ers, and apply for an amendment to the zoning regulations that would establish this as a conditional use, then we would deal with the economic issues as part of the use permit process. That is what we thought was going to happen last year, and unfortunately, that application was never submitted, which brings us to where we are right now. So what we're doing tonight is just a stopgap measure. I would hope after this experience that they do kind, I mean, even if they, you know, having the new stadium, it's going to be a matter of years before that's available, so we still are going to have the same problem, and I would hope that, you know, promptly an application is submitted to deal with this in the proper context of the zoning ordinance rather than as a, as an ad hoc permission that has to be granted almost on an urgency basis every year by the city council.
So what we're doing now is we're approving this year only.
This year only, correct.
We're not approving next year and next year.
No, no.
We're going to play this game again, I guess.
Well, I hope not. Next year supposedly, we'll have a mechanism in place through the zoning ordinance to deal with it.
I'd like the games to be played on Sunday, but if I could add, it might give you a little bit more of an ease if there is a timeframe for which you would like to add to how quickly we must put together a...
An agreement.
An agreement or a permit or a request, or I forgot the term. I'd be happy with that, that says, yes, you'll move forward, but you have 30 days to move forward to start an application or something to show that we are serious about it. With all due respect, I'd prefer not to come back in front of you unless, you know, there were some other needs, but I'd rather take care of it today and move forward as quickly as we can to satisfy your requirements and your needs.
Yeah, I have...
Go ahead. Go ahead. And then Clark?
I remember last year, I voted no for this because I knew you're going to come back. It wasn't a one-year deal. This pattern is going to continue unless we close the gap. You dismissively said that there is no cost, and there's the cost that the police that we're in cooperation. You're not counting the life, the impact on the health of people. The, I have a letter over here that clearly states that it affects the safety, the environment, the groundwater. All of that are impacted, and I can understand that you don't consider that to be impact on the lives of people.
Well, ma'am, with all due respect, those words were not uttered from my mouth, and I don't condone that whatsoever. I'm not dismissive. I do come hat in hand only from the standpoint that I wasn't involved in the process prior to. I regrettably find myself in the position of that. All I can tell you now is I'm committed to trying to rectify the situation. I do want to utilize that property for our fans, but in the very nature that it addresses your concerns. So if, I guess the only way that you can...
It's got to stop, though. It's got to stop.
Well, I...
People are not happy with it.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor?
Clark?
Chief, I'd like to hear from you from a safety aspect of...
Yes, and I know we discussed this last year. I think that we do have, and the 49ers organization has been wonderful, and they've been very cooperative with the Brisbane Police Department, and they do provide for two overtime officers to address all the traffic issues. So we do bring in two officers on overtime, which is paid by the 49ers organization. The use of the UPC lot is easy ingress and egress for the traffic, so it does make the traffic congestion much easier, both coming into, to the game as well as leaving. One of the things that we did require from the 49ers organization last year as part of their use permit was that they provide good lighting as well as onsite security so that it prevents any victimization, which thus then rolls over to the police department. And they've been wonderful. They've complied with that in the past. So yes, the use of that has made the ingress and egress of traffic much smoother during the game time.
Okay, then what I would suggest is that we allow the city manager to negotiate. I think it's for six games remaining.
We have six games, that's correct.
Six games remaining, so...
Well, check that. We're going to make the playoffs, so it might be eight.
Positive thinking. Hopefully, the ones you rejected two weeks ago were Dallas Cowboy fans, so...
Unfortunately.
Or whatever they were. Anyway, with the caveat that if there is no agreement, don't show up next year because the answer is no.
Understood.
Yeah, and...
I appreciate that.
Second the motion.
Thank you. I had one last. May I? Just one. Last year, there were security guards in the parking lot? They were. Particularly with all the recent situation that's happened in the games.
Yes, ma'am.
I hate to see Brisbane on the news for...
I can appreciate that. There is a little bit different of the way that parking lot is utilized. Once you park, the lot is completely closed, so there is the monitoring who goes in and out of that. So it is, it's not a tailgating use for the most part, but there are security officers that are on there 20, well, during the time that cars are parked, from the time it's opened to the time when they leave. Lighting, especially for night games, there are restrooms, there will be garbage and recycling receptacles in all those areas as well.
So there is a night game?
Uh, you know, there might be a night game left. At the end of the year, there would be a night game against, I think it's a Monday night game. I apologize for not having the date, but it would be Pittsburgh Steelers in December. So most definitely, there would, there would be additional lighting, whatever was needed. Yes.
Okay, all right. And then that final total, it's going to be 500 parking spots?
You know, it's an estimation. It's, I mean, if there was a, I'd, ideally, I don't anticipate it being more than that, but I'd hate to be limited unless you found that to be something that was important to you. But if there is going to be some sort of a negotiation, I'm not sure that the city would want to be eliminated.
No, I mean, I think I'd get more...
Yeah, I don't know the capacity of the lot. I'm using that as a, purely a guess of how many cars could park there. I could tell you, we could have parked over 500 cars if we had that space available at the Dallas game. Not to suggest that there'd only be 100 or 500. That's really difficult to tell how many cars could be parked in there, but ideally, if we could not have a capacity on the number that we could park there, it'd be more beneficial to us and certainly to the city.
Sure.
December 19th is the night game, Monday night game.
All right.
Well, I have a motion and a second. I also have a request from Terry O'Connell to speak on parking.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Terry?
Good evening, good evening again. Terry O'Connell, Brisbane resident. I'm sure UPC is charging a fee to either the San Francisco 49ers or to the parking concessionaire, and we know that the people who park there are paying money. We also know that we don't have a parking fee enacted here in Brisbane, but it doesn't seem to make sense when the city is so strapped for cash that we're having to cut programs that we would allow them to park for the rest of the season without an agreement. I can see giving them the opportunity to come back and saying, this coming game, they could park there? But I think that we should get some financial...
Oh, and we're going to get something for this season.
So I don't think that we should approve for the rest of the season until we know that we're coming to an agreement, not just wait till next season to come back for an agreement.
I think...
I think we should have a clarification. We're going to get this season.
The motion allowed the city manager to discuss, to come up with an agreement that would include perhaps a financial gratuity donation to this. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's my interpretation, and over the next couple...
Yeah, that's my interpretation, and over the next couple of days, we'll meet and discuss that. And, you know, if for some reason that we don't come to some sort of satisfactory agreement, then...
There's no deal.
There would not be a deal, correct?
Yes.
And it's the city manager. We're giving him the, the way to do that, yes.
Okay. It just sounded, when I was hearing, that you were authorizing it for the season and not to come back next year without coming forward with a, and not bypassing the planning commission and the zoning.
Yeah, next year it would go through the, the full thing, and if you don't, don't bother coming back because that's what the department wants.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Terry. Okay. No one else? Not hearing anything else? We have a motion and a second.
Call the question.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Guys, have it. Thank you. And then you'll be dealing with the city manager. I suggest tomorrow morning you'll be fine. I don't know what...
I was going to wait until the, the meeting was over tonight.
Oh, okay. Your choice. All right. I think that we come to staff reports, but I do have something here from the Administrative Services Director. Do you want to address this now or...
I think his items actually under mayor and council matters.
Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry. I missed that one. All right. Staff reports. City manager report on upcoming activities besides the 49er negotiations.
Yes, but the, and Councilwoman Richardson probably will want to speak to this, too. This Wednesday here at 7:00, we are going to have the roundtable, Airport Roundtable meeting that deals, is going to deal with the over-flight noise that we've been dealing with here for quite some time. Members of the FAA will be here. Virgin Airlines will be here. San Francisco Airport will also be here, and a number of members of the Airport Roundtable. And Councilwoman Richardson will be chairing that part of the meeting that has to do with public input and comment from, from Brisbane residents. As I've indicated to the council before, I think as many council people who can show up on Wednesday night and just indicate at least your presence and not make your, make statements, I think that'd be great. I think it's important that we show a unified position in terms of our community over, over this issue and that we're serious about it and have grave concerns over how this is being, or, you know, what the solution might ultimately be.
This is going to be televised?
This will be televised. We've done extensive notification. There's a group in town that's, calls themselves SFOnoise.com, if you, if anybody wants to look at their website. They will be also presenting on, on Wednesday night under the public comment part. They've done a tremendous job in terms of putting together a lot of data and analysis on this issue, and I think will bring delight the issues that we're facing with regards to the, the noise issue. But the general public is absolutely encouraged to be here. I think the more people we have in these chambers, the better the message we send to all the parties involved that we're very serious about what's happening. So again, just encourage everyone to be here Wednesday night, 7 until 9:00. That's all the good news I have.
Thank you. Mayor, Councilman, subcommittee reports.
I can give a report on this airport. First, as you know, grand jury made a report about roundtable and its effectiveness and so forth, and the chair was rather dismissive of the grand jury letter, and he really didn't want to address it, but the community, the Airport Roundtable members decided that it's a good thing to respond. They have prepared the letter that as a response, and truly, again, they're not accepting responsibility that there is a problem. Like in one of the statements, they had said that the data doesn't show, and yet Brisbane believed to be the problem. It just like, we're just having it in our head. It's really bothered me. I have asked...
How you feel? Is that it?
Yes. You know when I feel something. So I have asked the, we have Airport Roundtable to have a special meeting to address the grand jury report. There are items in that that is definitely useful for the communities that for airport to put that on the work program and follow up with that. I have placed the call to George Bergeron and also the chair of the grand jury, even though it was changed, to follow up with this grand jury report and not to shelf it like with other grand jury report that they had published. I want this item to continue so we can have some resolution. The other thing that, so in regards to the workshop tomorrow, if you remember in May...
Wednesday.
Wednesday. Oh, that's right. Wednesday, October 5th, 7:00. This workshop was to be held in May. They canceled it because United and Southwest and Alaska Airlines had conflict in scheduling. That's what we were told. Well, a few days ago, we understood they're not going to come. They refused to be here, not because of the conflict in scheduling. They don't want to be at the table, even though the group that we're talking about, the 405, that they have done tremendous work in collecting data. Forty-nine percent of all their United departures that go to Southern California go over Brisbane. It is unheard of, and it's only at 40% capacity, remember.
I hear it a lot.
It is bad. Okay. There is, I wanted to say to whoever at home here, there is an app that you can have it on your phone, and it's Report SF Noise. And in two seconds, you would have an app here. All you have to do is push it, and bam, it reports the way the flights are coming every two minutes. You can push the button every two minutes to send this noise. The instructions, I think, was given to Brisbane, and I'm going to make sure that our blog reflects how to download that app because it's extremely efficient, and it's been really bad. Airport Round, John Martin talked to me that they said, guess what? We're going to make some changes. We, we, we give you that. We make some changes. To me, some changes? What are you, are you giving me, what, something to just quiet me down? No, we want the Port 3 procedure to be followed. That's what we want. That's what the group is going to push for, and let's see what happens. And we were going to, on Wednesday meeting, we have asked to, remember, in the beginning, the FAA, TRACON, San Francisco Noise are going to make a presentation. So we asked that people could ask questions after each presenter. That was not granted. They don't want anybody to ask any question during the presentation because after their presentation, they're going to give me the gavel to take care of the public section. The public section is going to include presentation by four community members that have done a lot of work, and during that, then they would allow questions and, question and answer. So it is imperative that community members show up, be here, and share their views. The one that they are really concerned, and they've had some horrible encounter with community members from Orange County and so forth, so they're really, I feel like, I told them, they feel like they're damaged. They don't want to put themselves in a group that they're going to attack them and so forth. And I've said, that's not how Brisbane is. Brisbane likes to share their, you know, opinion, and they want resolve.
Sure it is.
But we don't, we don't come back and cuss them. We don't do any of that. We're re, even though, even though...
Hell, we don't.
Even though we like, you know, sometimes some things need to be said, but I think we need to be very cautious. All we want is for them to correct the problem. And with respect, and I think that's what we're going to have, so Virgin has made commitment to make changes. They went to do it, but there were some problems. They haven't done it. But I'd like to ask the council, when we see that Virgin has made the changes to help our community, the council to send a resolution and appreciation to Virgin for making changes that are required and working with our community, hopefully we can get United and others to work with us.
I have a question for you, Step.
Yes.
Step, and you may know this from being on the roundtable and maybe staff. Is there a designed flight pattern that they're supposed to follow?
There are.
There is?
There's prescribed path to follow, yes. But FAA said, we're not following that.
Well, yeah, that's where it gets a little confusing and a little bit, I guess, kind of frustrating for everyone that's involved, because we, we did have a meeting at Congresswoman Spears' office, I don't know, about a month ago, I believe?
Yes.
And the FAA was there, and in that meeting, we asked them, you know, because the problem is, is the Port 3 departure is supposed to go out four miles, which is basically the northern end of the lagoon and then turn, turn left, okay? Or at 1,600 feet in a four-mile marker, turn left. And, you know, we know just by eyeballing it that that doesn't happen that often, right? And so we asked the FAA the question of, well, you know, what percentage of the time would you expect that Port 3 departure to be followed? And they kind of almost were amused at the question and, and said that, well, we would never expect it to be followed. And so the question was, well, then what does the Port 3 procedure mean? And apparently, what it means is that if, as I understood it anyway from the answer, was that if radar was not available, if radar was down, then that would be where the plane would be expected to fly so that, you know, planes wouldn't crash into each other, right? So it's an almost, seemingly almost meaningless procedure if indeed it's never followed. But I think the, the argument that we've been trying to make is that, and actually, the chairman of the roundtable, the last roundtable meeting, asked the FAA, you know, what would be the impact of actually following that procedure? And I think that's a good question, and that's really the question we're trying to get the FAA to respond to, you know, absent, you know, some other mitigating circumstances, you know, conflicting airspace, basically. Why can't the procedure just be followed?
Is that, and this is to how, then, if I may, is there something legally, from a legal point of view? Can you review that document to, to see if there's some legal teeth in it that maybe we can...
Yeah, we can, we can take a look at it. I haven't looked at any of those documents. It's just, it's all kind of baffling to me because every plane leaving that airport is on instrument flight rules, and, you know, you'd think that's going to dictate exactly where they turn and when and at what elevation, and the FAA does have authority to have specific noise abatement procedures in effect for certain airports. So, yeah, I can take a look at that. I, it just, to say they don't know where they're going to turn, just makes no sense to me at all, especially if you're flying instrument flight rules.
Clark, one of the problem is, one time they say it's the pilot, it's the airlines. Another time, they say it's FAA. There is this, we truly, of all these meetings that we've gone to, we truly don't know which is which. One thing that I've done, I've called Adrienne Tissier because she's the board of...
Well, there should be some kind of rules, right? I mean, that, the FAA can establish particular rules for specific airports, and they've done that, Los Angeles, for example.
Yes.
So, you know, I would think even San Francisco may have such rules in place.
And then those are things that we need to review from a legal standpoint, right? I mean, to figure it out from our, our point of view, to kind of hammer them over the head with it, you know?
In, in the, in the meeting that we had, I, I used the term whimsical, and I didn't mean that they were operating in a whimsical fashion. I told, what I meant to say was that it appeared to be whimsical in terms of the decisions when the turn left and they come over the, the, the town of Brisbane. They got very upset at that because, you know, the clear, and it is a communication between the pilot and the FAA, you know, on, on that turn.
Through TRACON.
Yeah, through TRACON, and, and so it's, it's the pilot talking to TRACON, and, and they're getting the 1,600 feet elevation and now being able to take the left, left-hand turn. And, you know, you can speculate whether it's on-time percentages or fuel or just, you know, the...
Laziness.
Well, or convenience.
Economy.
Yeah.
Money.
What the reasons are, but, but, you know, it, again, it seems, it, it's one of those things where the fix seems so simple, but, you know, getting the parties to agree to it seems to be more difficult. But Wednesday night, again, is really kind of our best opportunity to kind of continue to lay out that issue and to really bring home to the powers that be that we're very serious about getting this changed.
The funny thing is, they're saying that if they change it in Brisbane, it's going to shift the noise to another city, and there are agreements that no city would shift noise to another city, right? We're saying, why did you put it into Brisbane in the first place?
A lot of cities signed off, from what I understand, way back when to insulate their homes, and Brisbane never was part of that agreement, going back to, I think, the '70s or '80s, right?
Definitely the '80s, yeah.
So Adrienne Tissier has not been involved in this, but I called her and I said, you're the rep for this area. So she's getting involved. She's going to send her representative, chief of staff, to be here with a statement to be read. And Dave Pine is the board of supervisor from San Mateo County that represent county at the Airport Roundtable. I've talked to him. He's made commitment to be here unless some family emergency happens. Now, there is another thing that I haven't touched thus far, and I talked to somebody that is very astute in political know-how, that suggested that I need to attend one of the San Francisco Airport Commission meeting at the City Hall in San Francisco and, and under public comment, read our concern and what has taken place. And apparently, the Commission in the past have been very leery of lawsuits, and they seem that they are willing to work with cities. So depending on what we get with this roundtable work, I'm willing to take it to San Francisco and do whatever we need to do.
Airport land use commission.
Just go all the way.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other subcommittee reports?
Well, we've had a couple, Clark and I have had a couple of Economic Development Subcommittee meetings. We've had a couple of meetings with some community members out at Sherpoint, and a couple of those folks are here today, and they've provided some really excellent feedback, and, and the input that they've given has, I think, has provided a greater opportunity for a better public engagement out at Sherpoint. And we have one more meeting with them before the guidelines come before the council, and I think when you see those guidelines and compare them to what we had before, I think you're going to be impressed with the, you know, that, that impact that the community provided, Clark and I, with those meetings.
Hey, you go.
And then also with the Economic Development Subcommittee, we've been meeting with, with Mish, which is back there, and she's been helping us to take the SWOT analysis that we received from the procedural students and, you know, reworking it to, you know, take it to the next level so that we can start forming an economic strategy that, you know, not only is based on the community's values, but also aggressively, you know, trying to reach out to bring business to Brisbane.
Can we introduce Mish?
I don't think we ever have.
Yeah, maybe, maybe we should do that. I mean, because...
Yeah, sure. So Mish Mercado, Mercado? How close was I? Close.
Mercado.
Is another person from, through the MTEP program. If you remember, MTEP is the Management Talent Exchange Program that is, that cities in San Mateo and Santa Clara counties exchange very highly talented... highly talented employees who are getting ready for the next step in their career, so they broaden their experience. Mish normally works in the city of South San Francisco as an HR person. She is working with us for the next three months, or two and a half right now, with, working on our economic development strategy. We talked about this at, when the students came forward from the Presidio School, that we probably should be looking at more of a citywide economic development strategy. Mish is helping with us with that. At the last meeting with the Subcommittee, she did a very nice map, which, which shows every building in Crocker who owns the building, as well as which ones are vacant, and that's some work that we have not ever been able to get to ourselves from a staff perspective, so she's working on that. As Cliff said, the next step is doing a SWOT analysis for the city, and then looking at subsections like Sierra Point, like Crocker, like Visitation, and then trying to determine which kinds of businesses we would be looking to attract in those areas. And bringing that kind of a strategy to the whole council and to the community, so we can have the conversation about what we want to see in Brisbane from a business perspective, because a lot of times what happens at the city council level is that we get to see businesses who are making applications who we don't want to see in Brisbane. So this is, this would be proactive in having staff, the council, and the community working together to figure out what it is that we would like to see, and that way we can make sure that those are the kinds of businesses that we do attract, and we go after, on a proactive basis. And so we're looking, trying to get as much work out of Mish as we can between now and December, when she goes back to her regular job in South San Francisco. She's sitting in the back of the room.
Can we put you on the spot, Mish? Do you want to come up and say something?
Sure.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Mish Mercado, is Stuart correctly pronounced my name?
Correct.
And I am very pleased to be at Brisbane. It's been a tremendous experience to be working with the Economic Development Subcommittee, and to get to know staff at our neighboring city, and I just appreciate the experience tremendously. And I hope to really help move this process even further, and so there can be, as I said, a cohesive strategy for Brisbane, so you know where you want to go in the future. So thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Been a lot of help, too.
Yes.
Anything else? No? Okay. Schedule that date, oh, before I forget. Apparently OSEC was working on some kind of a, with the school on some kind of a, a science award, and there's some urgency to this. Ray was familiar with it, I didn't, I didn't, the report wasn't, you know-
We could talk, we could put it back on the next agenda if you'd like.
Yeah, yeah, would you talk to him, just to be sure, we know, we, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Now, the next order of business is B, schedule the joint, the date for a joint meeting with the Parks and Rec Commission. Stuart?
Yes, the Parks and Recreation Commission is still trying to find a day where both the Commission members and the council are available. We met in October, where we met in September, at that meeting in September. We thought that October 24th or November 14th might be a good day. Unfortunately, you met after that time, and scheduled the October 24th for the special meeting with the budget. But I wanted to be true to what the Commission said. I didn't want to change what they had said. So they are looking for some off, if possible, and off Monday night, when the council has time available. November, they decided October 31st was probably not a good night, because that would be Halloween.
Halloween.
Yeah.
So they thought that people should be home and handing out candy to children. So the next one they saw was November 14th. They thought November 28th would not be a very good one, because that's right after Thanksgiving. So it's, if we would like, if you would like to do it in November, November 14th would be acceptable, or we can try scheduling something in December or January.
I would suggest we just schedule something in December or January, so that the new council can take part in this meeting.
I agree.
Okay, I'll go back to the Commission, we'll come up with dates for January, and-
Last time I had a trick-or-treater was when Steve's kids were little, about 20 years ago.
That's true-
That was the last time, huh?
Well, in all honesty, what happens-
I've been on Kings, for sure.
There's a certain road that everybody, I can tell you, you know, no one goes above Alvarado very often, because the hike up to King's Road does not seem to be candy productive. As my children told me, as they were, when they were a little bit younger. And as a parent, I had no desire to walk up Len Parkway, in the dark. Yes.
Okay.
You know, having done Halloween for like, seven years in a row, I-
Already?
I like candy. I go out, I wear a little Frankenstein mask, and I go trick-or-treating. I'm sorry, that's what I do.
Already, he's disenchanted, eh?
Oh, yeah.
Pair of Bob Marley masks. All right, next item of business is oral communications, number two. A chance for somebody to address the Council Matters, not on the agenda, and I see a hand up. Would you please?
Michelle Salmon, Brisbane resident. I was really disappointed in the decision that you made tonight on Item D in the consent calendar, and actually, one of the things that really disappointed me was that this showed up as a consent calendar item without any kind of, I don't know, public notification or process, other than getting the agenda on Thursday. And Randy, you may have been working on this diligently for six months, and you and John, and the developers, and everybody else, but I would like this part to be a lot more transparent to the public, especially on the Northeast Ridge developments, and this, this has been a very tough issue for us, for me in particular. And I, I don't want it just being rubber-stamped all the way through the way that the first part of the development went. And when you say, I hope they build it well, it really tears my heart apart, because I look around and I think, well, gee, I, I had hoped they had built the firehouse well, and instead we've got mold, and the fire department can't live there anymore. Gee, I had hoped they built Number 2 San Bruno Avenue well. Gosh, they have, you know, construction lawsuits going on there. And gosh, I hoped that they had built the Northeast Ridge well, and instead we have multiple construction defect lawsuits going on there. And I start to wonder about what the hell is the process, sorry for cussing, but, you know, what the hell is the process for building a decent building in Brisbane that can hold up longer than 10 years, or 20 years? And don't tell me it's the weather conditions, because I live in a house that was built in 1929, and, you know, I don't have some of those kind of problems. And so, what's going on? I mean, we, do we need better inspection, you know, I mean, yeah, two screws in the shelf, big deal. But what about the whole building being moldy? And, and we're not talking just the condos that have been there for, you know, a while. We're talking homes in the newest part of the development at the Northeast Ridge. And it makes me really uncomfortable that we just rubber-stamped this, and it's all happy, happy, hug, hug, with, you know, the developer, you know, and, and the people representing our city. And I'm not happy about it, I'm really not. And I think that really needs to be more transparent to the entire, to the, to the citizens, and not just, you know, the diligent, hard-working staff. And so, yeah, I'm not happy about it, and I think that we have responsibility to hold their feet to the fire, whether it's Brookfield, who's a $6 billion company with numerous small, limited liability companies attached to it, limited liability being the key word there. And, you know, this new developer who told, whoever the hell heck, sorry for cussing again, but that's how I feel right now, who they are. You know, Southwest diversified, long gone, you know, Brookfield, long gone. Now we have a new, you know, company. So, I don't understand when you say, I hope they build it well. Well, it's our responsibility to make darn sure that they do build it well. And, and I don't feel that we took that step tonight, I really don't, so, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Michelle. Anyone else? Well, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
No move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Yea, aye, sir.